Okay, it's four o'clock. I will call the Salina City Commission March 6th, 2023, meeting to order. I will look to staff for confirmation of the Kansas Open Meeting Act. Required notice is properly being provided?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We will take roll call then.
Mayor Hoppick?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Lenkowitz?
Here.
Commissioner Longbine?
Here.
Commissioner Ryan?
Here.
I would ask all those who are able to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Okay, we have no awards and proclamations today. Before we get into public hearing, I believe Commissioner Davis has a request.
Yeah, I would like to propose in addition to the agenda, next Monday, we're going to review housing proposal or proposals for our apartment development. And just wanted to get some ideas of what the process is going to be. Several citizens have asked, do the commissioners get to go over these or see them? And just kind of wondering what, how we got to where we're going to be and the process that we're going to use next week to make a big decision in a short period of time. We could discuss it in other business, but I think it's better if we just designate a prescribed period of time we could discuss it.
I will look to counsel with that because it's dealing with, and again, it's going to be about the same spot. Does that need to fall under development business? Can that fall under administration? Not that it really...
I'll look to the city manager to see if he has a thought on that.
Oh, I think development business is as applicable as any. So I think what I hear you saying is you'd like to amend the agenda to add item 7.1, Discussion of Housing RFP Process.
Yeah, not to discuss specifics of, but the process. I think there's a little ambiguity how we are gonna make the decision. Obviously, we'll be relying on staff to bring us the best proposals, but if we could just kind of explain how the process is working.
Would you like to make a motion to add that as item 7.1?
Yes.
And see if we can get a second.
Add that as 7.1, in addition to the agenda for discussion on the housing RFP process.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, a second, to add item 7.1 to... yes?
Mayor, I just wanted to make the quick point that because it is requesting, in addition to today's agenda, it does have the extraordinary majority requirements. So four votes are necessary.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion, a second, to add item 7.1 to discuss the housing RFP process to become, to come before us next week. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes 5-0, so that will be added to the agenda. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That will bring us to public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time.
Item 4.1, 1858 Properties LLC. Item 4.1A, conduct a public hearing to consider a request filed by 1858 Properties LLC, requesting the vacation of the north 100 feet of the 10-foot alley running north-south between lots 173 and 175 on 7th Street and lots 174 and 176 on Santa Fe Avenue in the original townsite of Salina, Seline County, Kansas. Item 4.1B, approve ordinance number 23-11145 on first reading, vacating the north 100 feet of the 10-foot alley running north-south between lots 173 and 175 on 7th Street and lots 174 and 176 on Santa Fe Avenue in the original townsite of Salina, Seline County, Kansas.
Okay, thank you. Based on the fact that I have an outstanding order currently at my office with 1858 Properties LLC, I am going to recuse myself from this item, and I am going to turn the meeting over to Vice Mayor Longbine.
We'll now open the public hearing.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. This is a petition that's been filed by 1858 Properties LLC, and they're requesting the vacation of the north 100 feet of a 10-foot alley that runs north-south, just to the south of Mulberry Street, between Santa Fe and 7th Street. And so the block that has South Street on the south and Mulberry Street on the north has, or as part of the original plating, had an alley running through it from South Street to Mulberry. The southern portion of that was vacated in 1973. And then there was an additional vacation of another segment on the site where we have the redeveloped Sonic Drive-In. And so that leaves a 100-foot segment of the alley left extending south from Mulberry Street. And Safety Auto Glass no longer operates from the building that's located at the corner of Santa Fe and Mulberry, and that property was purchased by Blue Beacon and then ownership transferred to 1858 Properties LLC. And 1858 Properties LLC also owns the vacant lot across the alley to the west. And since their two lots are bisected or separated by the remaining alley, they have filed a petition requesting that that alley be vacated. D.L. Rogers Corporation, the owner of Sonic, has also joined in the petition because they have property along the west side of the alley. They have no plans to build over or across this 10-foot strip, but they do want to eliminate the ownership gap between their east and west properties. And if this request were to be approved, city ownership would be eliminated, and ownership of the alley would revert to 1858 Properties LLC and D.L. Rogers Corporation, but a public utility easement would be retained. So one of the features of our downtown area is that, for the most part, our sanitary sewer lines are located in alleys at the rear of properties, and this block is no extension or exception. There is an extension of a sewer from the Masonic Temple to Mulberry Street. It goes all the way north through the downtown area. We also have Evergy and Cox Cable have facilities in this alley. They have indicated that they're opposed to the vacation unless a suitable replacement, utility easement is granted to cover their facilities and equipment. Cox Cable has indicated the same thing. The Director of Utilities has also requested that a utility easement be retained for the sanitary sewer if the alley right-of-way is vacated. So if this alley is vacated, a public utility easement would be retained, and Evergy's facilities would remain as is, Cox's facilities would remain as is, the city's sanitary sewer line will remain as is, protected by an easement instead of right-of-way. And so if there ever were a plan to build across this area, staff would anticipate that we would be in a similar situation as we were at the Homewood Suites across the street, where there was formerly a sewer that ran through an alley that would today be underneath the middle of that hotel, but they paid to relocate all the utilities out of that easement, and that easement was vacated. And so that process would probably be duplicated here. That would be a very expensive process, and I don't think that 1858 Properties is anticipating that. So we have provided some findings on page three and four of your report that we think justify vacation of the alley with essentially the Sonic Drive-In building that's built across where the alley used to be. This alley doesn't really serve any traffic purpose, and so the only public purpose that's left is to protect the utilities that are in the easement. So we've identified four alternatives for you. You could agree that no private rights will be injured by the proposed alley vacation, and the public would suffer no loss or inconvenience if this alley is vacated, and approve the attached ordinance on first reading. You could approve the attached ordinance, subject to any conditions you think are appropriate. You could postpone consideration of this item and continue the public hearing to a future date if you'd like to receive additional information from staff or the petitioner, or you could deny the petition if you don't think it's in the public interest to vacate this alley. So both property owners that would receive right-of-way have signed the petition, so there's no private parties to object. So with that, I'll open any, open any questions that Commissioners might have.
Questions?
Nope.
Thank you.
Is applicant here would like to...
I don't have anything to add unless you have specific...
Step to the mic, please.
Katie Kitchen, representing 1858. I don't have anything to add unless you have specific questions.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any public comment? With that, we will close the public hearing. And that will take us to item 4.1B.
Are you ready for a motion?
Ready.
Vice Mayor?
Do you want to read it again?
No, I'm ready for a motion.
Mayor, recognizing that no private rights will be injured and the public will suffer no loss or inconvenience, I move we approve ordinance number 2311145, vacating the 10-foot alley south of Mulberry Street between South Santa Fe and South 7th Street.
I'll second that.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to vacate the alley right-of-way. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, now do we need to actually approve the ordinance?
We have, okay.
Actually, I think that was your, it wasn't phrased as a first reading, but that was the vote that you just took. So we'll return it to you for second reading in a
Thank you. With that, we will move on to item 4.2.
Item 4.2, Superior Contracting and Manufacturing Services. Item 4.2A, conduct a public hearing on the advisability of the issuance of $21,300,000 taxable industrial revenue bonds. Item 4.2B, approve resolution number 23-8116, determining the advisability of issuing taxable industrial revenue bonds for the purpose of financing the acquisition, construction, and equipping of an industrial warehouse facility to be located in the city and authorizing execution of related documents.
Okay, thank you. I will call the public hearing to order, and I believe Mitch Robinson will, the Executive Director of Salina Community Economic Development Organization, will kick us off. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We've got several folks here to help talk about this, this project. We have Mark Millard, who is the CFO for Superior, Stephanie Carlin, who's with C5 Advisors, who is advisors to Superior, Sarah Steele with Gilmore and Bell is here, which is the city's bond attorney. And then, so we're going to just talk about this. If you recall, back on February 6th, we went, the company did an overview of the project. They're looking at approximately 243,000 square-foot warehouse that would be constructed along Vortex Avenue, which is on the south side of their property, which most of us recall as the old Eldorado facility there in the airport industrial center area. So their intent is to build this warehouse. They are working with a firm out of Wichita that is experts in the warehouse industry, and their target is working with local companies that would meet the needs of both raw materials, finished goods, or accommodations, potentially both. They have been meeting with companies in the community. There is definite interest within several of the manufacturers in the community. As was discussed on our meeting on the 6th, there is a shortage of warehousing in the community. As Tim Rogers agreed, that even in his facility, he has a shortage of space, and they're trying to target their building space more for aviation product, projects, and that this project would help, help with some of that need of moving some of the warehouse, warehouse items off the airport buildings, out of the airport buildings into this privately developed building. To go through the process, we, the Board of Directors of the Salina Community Economic Development Organization met on, make sure I give you the correct date, in a special meeting.
It's February 6th.
Thank you. February 2nd at the airport, and went through the process. The board discussed the project. In your packet, you should have received a scoring sheet on our, what we're recommending is the abatement percentage guidelines, and based on the new jobs, which as we discussed last time, we're not seeing, this is not a large job generating project. This is warehousing, which is, will help companies in the community with future job growth. But they're initially looking at about three, three jobs, and then as the building is filled, we'll see more jobs come on to help provide the warehousing needs for the building. So investment qualified for a 20% abatement based on this recommendation. Investment is going to be a little over $21 million, which would qualify for a 60% abatement for the investment number. And then we have two other areas that they qualify. The Board of Directors of our organization, I feel like it's very important to support existing local community, companies. And with that, that would qualify for another 20%. And, and then the synergy they have with other existing businesses would qualify for 10%, so that maxes them out at 100%. So that's how, that's how the board came up with that recommendation. If you recall, this is, this is what the building, the new building will look like. And at this point, I'll turn it over to any questions you all have. If there's anything you all want to say, or maybe just answer questions that the commissar has, and/or any of the other people taking part in the public hearing. And then we can discuss this now if you want to as well.
All right. And it may be that my math skills just aren't what they used to, used to be, but on the page four of the blue sheet, there's a summary of the benefit-cost ratios. And for every entity other than the city of Salina, the benefit divided by the cost does equal the ratio that's given, and it certainly appear to be very advantageous to the state of Kansas and the school district.
Always is.
Always is. But the numbers as presented don't work out using the same math for the ratio for the city. And I've gone back to the chart, and I guess I have another question, and maybe I'm just reading this chart incorrectly. But when the, the first chart, I guess page one of 14, with the yellow-brown print on it.
The Salina...
Well, yeah, I guess it'd actually be the next page, page two of 14. At the bottom, it's calculating rate of return on investment, the net public benefits and the public costs. On the surface, it seemed like the benefits would be a positive number and the costs would be a negative number. It just, can you explain that math there? Because I'm, there's something I'm not following, and I just...
Commissioner, I have the same problem of not being highly skilled in my math area. I have talked to the gentleman that handles this study, worked for us at Wichita State. I went back, when the city manager brought this up several weeks ago, we went, I went back and looked at all the previous, or at least the last three or four projects, and the number ratios are in the same race, in the same, this is the same as all the other ones. I'll put it that way. So I don't see this, and I've talked with him, I was just on the phone with him before, before I came in here. He believes these numbers are, are correct. And why they're inverted, I guess, I, I can't answer that question at this time.
And, or why the public benefits and the costs are added together, just from a theoretical perspective?
When I talked to him about this previously, he said, "That's just the way the formula works." And that's how it's calculated.
Well, the reason I'm asking is, we're not, we don't gain a benefit on the number of jobs, because the number of jobs for this amount of money is almost zero. So I'm just trying to justify the...
Right. I think...
The investment.
Right. I think the...
If I may? Sarah Steele, Gilmore and Bell, we're bond counsel to the city. And I'm just doing chicken scratchings on my sheet, trying to ascertain this as well. And I think the confusion is that the net public benefits would be the actual public benefits, which is in the third line from the bottom of 1.578. That, if you subtract that number minus the costs as estimated, that's where you get the net public benefits. So I think that's the, it's attempting to represent the excess of the benefit over the public costs. But I would tend to agree with you. It's not very well labeled, and it, it is very confusing. But I believe that the ratio at the very bottom is calculated solely based on the public benefits line compared to the public cost line. Does that make sense?
It will, if you can tell me the difference between a net public benefit and a public benefit.
The net would be minus the costs.
Right. I think if you focus on the bottom two lines, the total public benefit of $1,578,896, public costs of $1,329,601, the difference, or the net of those two, is that 249,296 being shown above. And if you take $1,578 and divide it by $1,329, you get that, that benefit ratio of 1.19. That's, I think I'm following your logic. That's the best explanation I've heard so far.
I can follow that math. I guess I have a problem adding a benefit and a cost on the same side of the ledger.
I don't think they're actually adding it. They do add up.
Well, if you add those numbers, they equal the 1.578 million.
Yeah, but I think, I think they determined the 249 by subtracting rather than adding. They calculated the public benefit of the $1,578. They calculated the public cost of $1,329. Subtract the cost from the benefit, you get the net benefit of the 249. So...
So if this chart had been upside downwards?
Yeah.
It would have been a lot easier to...
If it flowed the other way, I think the logic would be more self-evident.
And I think if you go, tell me if I'm wrong, if you go to page, I've got too many pages here in front of me. If you go to page four on the blue sheet, where they looked at the city of Salina public benefit, they put the 249 in there.
Right.
Which is the net benefit instead of the gross. So that's where I had to go to the back page, because that number should have been the 1.5, not the 249. Everything else was done using the benefit, not the net benefit.
Right, because...
Net public benefit.
One of those numbers had to be...
Yes.
Wrong somewhere.
So this, this number here on page four of your blue sheet...
Should have been the 1.5.
Instead of being 249, it should be the $1,578,896. Am I correct?
Yes.
That is the best explanation I can come up with as well. Thank you.
And Commissioners, if you are not comfortable with that, you're welcome to postpone this, and we will get you a definitive answer, if that, if it means additional follow-up or having the author of this report online.
And following on that, from Mistress Greg, the public hearing is a requirement. We've published notice of that. I would recommend you go ahead and ask any public input, hold the public hearing, and then if you want to delay action on the resolution to move forward, that would, that would be fine.
And if we do that, we would not have to have a public hearing again because we've corrected, we've done that today.
Correct.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Is it always typical for the state to realize a much greater?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Answer came out quickly. Thank you.
And all the taxing entities have to sign off on this for the IRB to...
No, this, this property is located within the Salina city limits. Therefore, the Salina City Commission has sole authority over whether to grant this exemption, and it does not require input, unlike some other economic development benefits that might be available with industrial revenue bonds. You do not have to actually have their approval.
And you might touch on the notice that's provided there.
Correct, which is why there is a notice that is mailed to the school district, which in this case is southeast of Seline, and the county specifically drawing their attention to this public hearing if they chose to come and speak to this body.
It would seem the county has the most marginal benefit in this, but...
I would agree, yes. As long as I have the floor, I might add, just add my usual caveats. I know that many of you have been involved in industrial revenue bonds recently, but this is not an obligation of the city in any way, does not count as debt toward the city, and the city is not responsible for making any payments on the debt, even if it goes into default. That's, that's certainly not the typical bond issued by the city, but in this case, it is not your responsibility.
I saw Mr. Millard stand up. Do you want to comment?
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Any questions to my right?
More of a comment. And it's probably splitting hairs more than anything, but I've done that math twice, and it's actually that net. It's, yeah, it is. It's off by a dollar. I thought it was worth... I thought it was worth at least mentioning. I'm sorry if I appear to be splitting hairs.
I guess I see this as not a big job gainer. We know that and, but I, I see it as feeding other jobs in the area and I think would be a benefit to the community as a whole.
Commissioners, one other item of note. Mr. Robinson mentioned the, the recommended policy from the EDO board and they've developed that, they presented to you, but it's yet to be adopted. The current policy is in, has been in effect since 1991, but it does provide that a section of authority and discretion, the authority to grant tax exceptions, exemptions within the city is vested solely in the Board of City Commissioners. The Board is under no obligation to approve any requested exemption and reserves the right to deviate from the policies and criteria contained herein. As circumstances exist and weren't such deviation, uh, such circumstances may be included but not limited to economic development projects financed by means that substitute for industrial development bonds, which resolutions intent containing tax exemption have previously been issued, economic development projects which do their unusual nature or magnitude offer extraordinary benefits to the community. And you may recall, we've got some formulate calculations that date back to 1991, um, but it, it contemplates confirmation of a positive economic outcome, which is part of the reason for the cost benefit analysis. So I think you're within your discretion, um, and I think your questions are spot on. Hopefully, uh, we've been able to answer the, that outstanding question about the calculation.
Just one other, just for confirmation, this does not count towards our statutory debt.
Correct, it does not.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, if not, I'll open up the public comments or. I guess I'd, with that, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission if there's any action that would like to be taken.
Mayor, I move we approve resolution number 23-8116.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor to approve resolution number 23-8116. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes five zero. Thank you very much. Okay, that will lead us to the consent agenda.
Item 5.1, approved the minutes of February 27, 2023. Item 5.2, award the bid for Smoky Hill River Greenway Trail tree removal, contract number two, in the amount of $36,500 with a 5% construction contingency for a total project authorization not to exceed $38,325 and authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Salina Tree upon fulfillment of all prerequisites under the bid documents.
Do we have any items the city commissioner would like to remove? If not, I'll accept a motion to approve.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to approve consent agenda items 5.1 and 5.2. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes five zero. That will lead us into administration.
Item 6.1, approve ordinance number 23-11143 on second reading, amending section 42-362 of the I-2 district regulations and section 42-382 of the I-3 district regulations to add storage of consumer fireworks to the list of permitted uses in the I-2 and I-3 zoning districts.
Okay, this ordinance, uh, came before us and was passed on first reading on February 27th. Since that time, there have been no comments, have, no comments have been received. Again, um, make a note that there would be no fiscal impact to the city of Salina if this zoning text amendment was approved. Do we have any questions or comments of anyone from the commission? Any questions or comments from the public? Okay, if not, we will bring that back to the commission.
Mayor, I move we approve ordinance number 23-11143 on second reading.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to approve ordinance number 23-11143 on second reading. I would ask for a roll call.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Lenkowitz.
Aye.
Commissioner Longbine.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hoppick.
Aye. That passes five zero. That will bring us to item 6.2.
Item 6.2, approve ordinance number 23-11144 on second reading, annexing the east half of Centennial Road from Waterwell Road north to the existing city limits.
Okay, this ordinance was also passed on first reading on February 27th of 2023. Since that time, no comments have been received. Um, also like to make a note that there would be no fiscal impact to the city of Salina if the annexation is approved. Are there any questions or comments from the commission? Any, uh, comments from the public? If not, I will bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor Hoppick, I move for the approval of ordinance number 23-11144 on second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 23-11144 on second reading. I would ask for a roll call.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Lenkowitz.
Aye.
Commissioner Longbine.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hoppick.
Aye. That passes five zero. That will lead us into, um, item 6.3.
Item 6.3, approve resolution number 23-8115, establishing a special improvement district for Cedar Ridge Drive, water, sanitary sewer, street and drainage improvements in Cedar Point addition and authorize city staff to accept bids for the improvements.
Mr. Stack.
Thank you, mayor and commissioners. This project is for 22 more lots near the Cedar Ridge addition that's been, um, um, in, over, in construction for about 20 years now. So, um, Jacob, could you pull up my, my map of this? That's always helpful to look at the maps, you know, a little time here, but just pull up the map. Um, so yeah, the, the development company, Cedar Ridge Development LLC, Kevin and Stephanie Cool have purchased, um, property from Bob Hayworth in this area and are continuing the development kind of for those same, um, types of lots and same types of housing in that area. Cedar Point is actually a little newer, um, kind of a, a different location because it's on the south side of Cedar Ridge Drive. So, sorry, the north side. Everything else has been on the south side thus far. Okay, where are we at here? Can you rotate that maybe to the right? I guess it's this, this area right here is our issue. I just have a, it's turned a little bit, but, um, here is the, the original kind of development down in, in this area for, for Cedar Ridge. Briar Gate is over here. Florida Del Sol is in here. Of course, the north side of the property, which is on this over here, which is the, is the golf course. So this is the area that we're talking about here with Cedar Point. Kevin and Stephanie Cool just did Cedar Ridge Phase Two, which is right over here. Rotate to the right, rotate to the right. Oh, well. There, it's much better. Thank you. It helps everybody. So yeah, Grand Prairie is over here on the, um, right in this area as well. Just kind of get your bearings now that we're north and south. Part of this development is, um, includes this portion of Cedar Ridge Drive, which is about right, about right here is where we stopped years ago when Cedar Ridge Drive was improved with this, with this, um, project over here, which was Bob Hayworth's original development. They stopped it, um, almost to Valley View, I guess, if you know where Valley View is down, right here's Valley View. So their property overlaps Cedar Ridge Drive, um, from here over to here. So as part of their development, um, is, for their normal development, they have their streets, their, their storm sewers, their water and sewer, they'd also be required to develop, um, or upgrade Cedar Ridge Drive, which is their budding perimeter street, which gets, gets Cedar Ridge Drive developed from here over to here, which is, which is good and it's a pretty old road. It's, um, needs to be upgraded and so as part of this development, um, they would have that, um, I guess that cost, I guess, associated with their, with their proper portion of their property, uh, or their development here. So as you follow through the petition, um, and notice the costs, you'll see they're very high. So it's, it's one of the more expensive, um, projects we've done, but you know, with the way it goes with inflation and everything else, it's, uh, building materials and compounded with that is, is the Cedar Ridge Drive improvements. So, um, as far, as part of this petition process, you have to go through, um, bond council to make sure it's, has the right language in there because really Cedar Ridge Drive benefits more than just the Coles. Uh, it, it benefits more than just the Cedar Point property actually. So, uh, you have Valley Views down here on the south, a couple of properties here and then of course, everybody who drives through there. So as part of the petition, some language had to be added to say, we understand that, you know, not all, uh, properties that benefit are included in here. So it's just part of the, part of the, they were okay with it and understood the, yep, for us to get this project moving, there's probably, it'd be pretty tough to get everybody to sign off on it that, you know, benefits from this. So these, that's kind of the way development works. You kind of just have to, if you're ready to go, you kind of have to, um, take it and then this, this language has been inserted in there. So that's, that's kind of the main reason for the higher costs, I guess you'd say. So yeah, this is 22 lots, uh, right through here. The, the drainage ditch or the drainage detention pond will be over in this corner. It will drain onto the, uh, municipal golf course, currently kind of where it's all going now. We've worked with the municipal golf course to try to make that work through, uh, holes number six and the green of five there. Anybody who knows the golf course there, so, um, but it's been quite a long process and, um, this is where we're at today to finally get it moving. They feel like they've, um, had some good interest in Cedar Ridge Phase Two and they feel like instead of developing more of Cedar Ridge kind of over, um, in this area, this is their next phase possibly, or could be their next phase, they decided to jump across the street and do Cedar Point. So it's, um, the Coles are here today. If you have more questions for them as far as, you know, why or how much, some kind of their housing is going to be or any, any reasons for that, but at least from our perspective, uh, we've done the calculations and the engineers gotten the plans to us and the estimates and we've done the petition and feasibility study here with, uh, resolution of advisability, working with bond council and staff and the Coles for quite a while to get this, to bring this here today. So I will, uh, stand for questions and I've got my, Wayne Nelson, is there my staff member who does a lot of these for us, has been doing them a long time. And then, um, Ms. Stephanie Cool is here today as well.
Look to my right for questions. Yes, my question might be, uh, to the developer.
Okay.
Uh, the addition, yet you just got, it's build ready, but I've not seen any building going on. Are you getting too far ahead?
I will let Stephanie talk about that. We've kind of talked about that a little bit already. Thanks, Stephanie.
Hi. So we, Stephanie Cool, Cedar Ridge Development, Salina, Kansas. We have actually sold two lots in Cedar Ridge, uh, Phase Two. So there's only, there was only 13 lots to begin with and so now there's only 11 that are available. We continue to get calls on those. Um, the reason we'd like to go ahead and get started on Cedar Point, it's going to take a little while to get the infrastructure in, to get bids. Um, we always have the option, if the bids don't come in competitively enough, that we can scrap the project and delay that, but we do feel that we, you know, this price point in Cedar Point is actually going to be a little bit less. The lots are a little bit smaller, so it may actually, um, end up working out well that we'll have the, the larger lots on Cedar Ridge and with the custom homes and then potentially, um, the smaller lots on Cedar Point with a combination of custom and spec.
Okay, that's a good explanation.
Thank you. Any other questions while I'm up here or?
Don't run off. I'll see if you have any here.
I have none.
Um, looking at these preliminary numbers, how did these compare to the last subdivision you did as far as the total cost? These are.
They're terrible. Let's be honest.
I can't remember. Do you remember what those were per lot? These are about 62 eight.
These are 62. I, right, I can tell you that the cost per lot over in Cedar Ridge Phase Two is $213 per month. The cost for Cedar Point, if these come in as projected with the contingencies and all of those fees, they're going to run about $266 per lot. So not too bad. I mean, when you look at it in terms of, I kind of look at it in terms of a cell phone bill, um, with regards to the cost. So the other piece of that is that we have the option as developers to, um, pull back our engineering costs and absorb that. We, obviously we've already paid that, so we could absorb that. I'm not saying that. We're going to wait and see what happens with the final cost. The other piece of that is that there is a 15% contingency, um, in this and obvi, we did not have any contingencies on Cedar Ridge Phase Two. We'll hope that that trend will continue with Cedar Point and so that the cost could actually come in a little bit lower.
Are, are these all zoned, uh, single family?
They are.
They are all single family?
They are.
Okay. Any other questions? Any questions or comments from the public for?
Thank you.
Either Mr. Stack or the developer?
Okay, with that, I will bring it back to the commission for discussion or action.
Mayor, I move we approve resolution 23, um, 8115 and authorize city staff to accept bids for the improvements.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number 23-8115 and authorize city staff to accept bids for the improvements. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes five zero. Thank you. That will lead us to item 6.4.
Item 6.4, governing body direction on state legislative lobbying regarding local sales tax on food.
Mr. Scrag.
Thank you, mayor and commissioners. I believe this came up, uh, in other business or was discussed briefly at prior city commission meeting and questions were raised about the status and, and how we, how you as a governing body could take up the topic of the possibility of the state, um, exempting food from local sales tax. And so I want to acknowledge that my staff report's a little, uh, different than others in that I've attached a handful of news articles to help provide you some context, uh, um, that I thought would might be helpful in terms of where things stand. So in, in summary, Senate Bill, um, 248 was presented, um, on a Thursday night, I want to say a week ago now, um, and was approved, it was approved as Ty Masterson indicated. Senate Bill 248 started out as a proposed amendment, well, I'm sorry, let me back up. A year prior, the state legislature passed legislation to phase out sale, state sales tax on food, um, and it was intended to be a graduated reduction of the, the sales tax rate till it got to zero. So then Senate Bill 248 in this legislative session, um, proposed altering that approach and exempting healthy foods from the state sales tax. And Ty Masterson, uh, by way of the news reports indicated that, uh, he, they were looking for, uh, some savings to be captured and redirected towards, uh, flat income tax proposal that they wanted to take up. And so Senate Bill 248 actually started down the path of, um, decreasing the sales tax exemption on food at the state level and the ultimate finished product of Senate Bill 248, um, was expanding that exemption to have all food exempt from, uh, sales tax at the state and local level effective immediately. And so now it, it's come out of the senate, it will head to the House Taxation Committee for their deliberation and the, the open speculation in, in the news reports is this will all end up in conference committee, all the different tax proposals will end up in conference committee and that conference committee will come up with one final recommendation that the two houses of the legislature would be expected to vote up or down without amendment. And so this whole topic is caught in the middle of some, you know, high level tax negotiations at the state level by my estimation. Um, so what does that mean for us? What does that mean for our local jurisdictions? As I mentioned, it started out as a proposal for, uh, a sales tax exemption on healthy foods and I provided in the staff report, uh, what the definition of healthy foods is. I won't read that to you, but it, uh, and I haven't cross-checked it, but I think it may line up with SNAP or some other government program, assistance program that identifies, um, eligible foods that are, uh, eligible for, uh, use of assistance. The fiscal note and the supplemental note for Senate Bill 248 as it, as it originated indicated that the state budget office estimated that healthy food, sale of healthy foods accounted for. budget office estimated that healthy food, sale of healthy foods accounted for 15% of all retail sales. If that's the case, and if you look at our sales tax that we receive, received in 2022, then 15% of that would equate to approximately $3.6 million of lost revenue at the city of Slyna level. And in the staff report, we provided you a breakdown of, we have really two sources of, of sales tax revenue. We have the city's sales tax, and then we have the city's share of the county's sales tax. And so we essentially collect about twice as much as the county. So presumably, the fiscal impact on the county might be $1.8 million. Bear in mind, that is based off the budget office's assumption that healthy food accounts for 15%. Maybe I shouldn't name brand names, but when you throw in Cheetos and Coke and all the other foods that aren't healthy into the mix, we have not seen a reference number for that. So presumably, it's going to be more. Don't know how much more. We, staff tried to run a, a different calculation based on the data that we had available to us. We don't, we don't receive sales tax level at the product category level. We do get sales tax information by retailer that cannot be disclosed publicly. And those retailers self-categorize themselves, in this particular case, as a grocery store or as a general merchandiser. So in the staff report, we noted that we have a couple of retailers that, that classify themselves as grocery stores primarily, and those are Dylan's and Aldi's. And then we have others that sell food, among other things, that classify themselves as a department store, Walmart, Sam's Club, Target. So we, at the staff level, made some assumptions that if the grocery stores' sales, 85% of their sales were food, and if the department stores, 60% of their sales were food, we then ran our own calculation. We actually came in lower than the state's estimate at $2.4 million. And I think the conclusion of the fiscal note that I provided is regardless of what the actual calculation might be, it appears that these numbers are pretty significant. Or we're talking in the millions. And so the question before you, this is very much policy decision. Didn't want to, as staff, just proceed with lobbying in opposition to Senate Bill 248. I did provide a little bit of discussion about, and at a broader level, very frequently you see taxes talked about whether they're progressive or regressive. Maybe a little bit of an oversimplification, but progressive taxes are seen as putting added burden on higher-income individuals, where regressive taxes are seen as, as being a more of a burden on lower-income individuals. And food, sales tax on food would certainly be seen as regressive. All of us need to purchase food. It's not necessarily a discretionary item, like some other things might be. And with that, I kind of backed out of any staff recommendation and then conclusion acknowledging that this is very much policy discussion for you at the governing body level to take up. I hope that's helpful in terms of an overview. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions that you might have or explain the math as we prepared it.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Mr. Scragg for, for putting this together. I kind of asked him to do this, knowing that some of us are going to Topeka Wednesday with, with the Chamber of Commerce. And not sure how we want to address this with our legislators as a, as a group, or just give them items that they need to think about as they move this direction, because this is a, a change in direction of where they were headed last year. So I guess I'll just open it up to the, to the commission for some, some input on where you, you feel you stand on this. And we'll see if we can come up with a direction we want to head or not. So.
Well, I, for one, disappointed that the state is, is taking this track without some, allowing us some maneuverability, phasing in this tax relief. I mean, there's a political aspect of wanting to do, to get rid of this tax that's regressive. But for us to just turn around and have to replace that revenue all in one tranche, I just think it's unfair of our, of our legislature. They need to phase it in somehow so that communities, I mean, home rule's really important. It, we get more done at the local level than anyplace else. It's because we're, we recognize our uniqueness and we look at our accountability and, and our flexibility. And if they just sock us with this, I don't see where the money comes from. That's, $5 million is how many mil that we've got to make up. And the county is, has fewer revenue options than we do with the sales tax. I can't see us packing it on the water expenses. So where's the money come from? So if it lays like it's being put out, I just don't think I would support it.
Commissioner, you reminded me of two things I failed to include in my report, if I may. One is the way the legislation's currently written, not the proposed legislation, but the statutes, there is not discretion on the part of, you know, local government to exempt certain products from sales tax. And so in for a penny, in for a pound, that anecdote might actually be pretty applicable here. But, you know, we're all in, in terms of the sales tax. They, I'm not aware of any discussion so far about allowing discretion at the, at the local level. And then the fiscal note did include an estimate, if we use the state's estimated loss, and so we wanted to recover that with property tax, that our estimate is that would take a 7.27 mil increase.
And we're 30. So that's 25% more. That's unthinkable.
Certainly undesirable.
It's unthinkable, especially for someone that wants to continue in this role.
Right. Well, you know, just continuing, if you're on fixed income or low income, basically right now, we go in the store, 10% of our money is left at the front door to be mailed to some governmental agency before we buy the first thing. And those of us with money or who can go out and make more money can absorb it. Someone who doesn't have much money to begin with, or as I'm slowly transitioning to a social security fixed income person, you know, they're only so many dollars. And you don't want to give up 10% of your purchasing power before you walk in, you know. So I'm, I'm strongly in favor of, of reducing the tax on food. From a practical perspective, the phasing in process works much better because it gives local communities a chance to figure out where that money is going to come from and adjust the budgets. This may be, I don't know where, Wisconsin, this, this may be the first place where I've actually paid tax on food. So governments are, you know, I think more states, and correct me if I'm wrong, but, but it's certainly not unusual for states to not tax food. Now, motor oil, if you buy it from a grocery store, will get taxed, but, but food isn't. So somebody's figured out how to do it. And, you know, if you want basic public services, at some point, your only two options are income tax, property tax, or have some other source of revenue, a sales tax. I mean, I guess you build a Six Flags over something and, and you can get taxed from that, the entertainment tax. Yeah, I would just, soon they kind of leave it the way it was last year and let it phase in. You know, it'll be hard. Slyna will have a lot of money to make up, but we already have problems with people who can't afford housing, can't afford food. And, you know, a little bit of tax relief would, would come, reducing the sales tax on, on, on foods. I don't have a, you know, I'm philosophically aligned with reducing the tax on food, but, but I think the Senate is kind of monkeying with things and muddying the water right now.
One, one clarification, I don't want to contribute to misconception. The phasing in is just of the state's sales tax. The, the legislation last year takes the state's sales tax to zero and leaves the local sales tax in place.
Yeah. 67% of the population lives in the 26 cities of the first class. So this is impacting, going to impact an awful lot of people in major cities, which all of us have a pretty similar sales tax when you look at the breadth of it. So I, I can't believe there's not a lot of conversation about this out there.
Well, you don't want to get in a situation where one city has no tax on food and the next city, two blocks down the road, just because the city limit is there, you know, puts a 4% tax. Guess who's going to get the shoppers?
Well, here in Kansas, it's not like we're under taxed on anything. And I'm all for reducing taxes, but having a mandate from the state on what local communities, we got things budgeted and dependent on this certain tax, and now we can't collect that. I have a problem with it. I was in favor of the, the state's phasing approach to drive the overall food sales tax to zero. And I don't know why they felt they needed to make modifications there. I guess it's to pay for the flat income tax. But I definitely, you know, we talk about property tax. No way we can be hitting people with more property tax. That's just crazy. And I don't like sales tax, but I would be in favor of this plan if it was phased in. And gently phased in. Overall, I think that, well, when they talk about healthy foods, I've been in other states where they have zero tax on, like fresh produce and fresh meat, things like that. And they're really complicating this bill. And it's probably going to be hashed through committee to where we won't recognize it when it comes out the other side. But I am not in favor of the mandates.
The other thing that concerns me is if, depending on when the, whatever comes out, what the commission has to decide to do, we may be in a position where we have to reduce services. So there go public-private partnerships out the window, plans for parks and rec. I mean, those would be very painful for the community. And we'll be set, taking care of the health and protection of the community, our basic duties. And we'll be reducing services. I just, I can't fathom getting to that territory.
I, I'm one that always looks forward to a special tax getting paid off and eliminated. It seems like they never go away, though, but they could. And, you know, this, losing this income would delay that further.
Commissioner Longbine?
Oh, I'll preface what I'm going to say with, did I interrupt?
No, I meant to-
Oh, well.
Commissioner Long-
I'll preface what I'm going to say with, from the get-go, there should have never been sales tax on food. But unfortunately, budgets throughout the state are, you know, they're based on that revenue. And that's, it is what it is. I think despite our best attempts to not bring it over to property tax, I think it's eventually going to affect property tax. And it's going to hurt the people this is meant to, to help in the form of higher rents, because it's just the way things work. And I don't have an answer as far as how it should be implemented. I think it's just, it's a huge shock to the, the system, so to speak. And I guess we'll have to adapt. But I think long game, this is going to hit property tax.
Thank you. I'm going to look to Mr. Scragg. I believe the Kansas League of Municipalities came out against this. And did they even make a comment? They weren't even sure that this was, I can't remember the words they used. I won't say illegal, but they felt like it was going against home rule and was, was-
Yeah, and they certainly, local authority, home rule. I've seen other communications about kind of the longer history of the legislature removing a revenue source and promising, promising to leave communities whole somehow. And that doesn't generally, has not come to pass either. So there's general opposition just because of the fiscal impact.
Yeah. I believe this is, I'm not sure if there's some posturing going on here because they're talking about a flat tax, and now we're talking about sales tax on food. So I think Commissioner Longbine said we may not even recognize what comes out of this. So it'll be interesting. I agree with the other commissioners. I think it sounds like one of the things we need to discuss, if they're really going to mess with local sales tax on food. And I don't know, do we know for sure it's healthy food?
No.
Or we don't know, it could be all-
It started out healthy food and ended up all food.
So we could be throwing Doritos and Ding Dongs in there, which will really throw-
Philosophically, I have a huge problem with that. I, I just, the idea that, you know, the staple's fine, but, you know, your Ho Ho's and Ding Dongs and everything, that's exempted as-
So that, that even increases that. So if, best case scenario, we need to tell them this needs to be phased in over a fairly lengthy time. As, as a commissioner for the city of Slyna, I'm a little, what's the word I'm wanting to use, against this because Slyna has a really large pull factor. In other words, if you drive through Sam's or you draw, drive through Walmart or Dylan's, there's a lot of out-of-county tags. And I, I like it when people come to my community and help me pave my roads, you know, take care of my parks and that type of thing. So I'm a little selfish when we start talking about the city of Slyna, because I think our pull factor of western and northern part of the state really benefits us. We talk about it being a regressive tax, which, I mean, I understand Commissioner Davis, but it will increase property taxes. And it'll also, I think, will affect rents, because individuals that have rental properties are going to raise rents to, to offset the increase in the, in the mill. I also have a little bit of a concern about star bonds. We have star bonds that we're funding the downtown with, and we have the Dollar General that sells food. So I'm not sure how that's going to affect that bond payment also. A lot of people don't remember, but a lot more has been put on property tax over the years, because how many years ago, I'm going to have to look at Mike or Debbie Pack to, you know, we took property tax off of equipment. And so when that came off, that, that put a lot more stress again on our, on our mill of, in our property tax. So I, I think we need to at least let them know that we'd like, I'd like to at least be able to make some of those decisions as a, as a commissioner. And this is probably not going to affect three of us, I don't think, because it doesn't happen until next year. That, that budgeting process would get harder if, if this was, was passed. So I guess I'm hearing pretty much from each one of you that as a, as a group, we, at, at worst-case scenario, they need to phase this in over a, a period of time. Well, another thing to consider, if you look at studies, poor people don't eat a lot of healthy food because they're more expensive. And that's the reason they gravitate towards the less healthy food. So this is, it's just perpetuating bad health, poverty. I mean, this is, is doing nothing to break the cycle that has put us where we are now, you know, socially and health-wise. It's, I just, I know who's going to benefit from it, but, you know, eventually that rubber band gets pulled so tight that, that it snaps. And the way it snaps in Kansas is people leave. And, you know, we will have 1 million people paying the tax burden of 3.5 million, you know, if this continues. I guess, since this is an agenda item, I'll open it up to the, the local taxpayers for their, for their comments.
Ben Winholz-Slyna, you all are making this doom and gloom. And I realize you commissioners run the money, basically, and, and Mr. Scragg. So you're looking at money coming out of your pocket that you're be able to, you're going to be able to spend. What you fail to look at, yeah, all you're looking at is what we're, what the city is going to lose. The benefit of the sales tax on food going away completely benefits the lower class, middle, middle class also. And if they are able to save that money in sales tax and not have to pay it for food, that's discretionary money that they'll spend somewhere else, hopefully in our local community. So if they want to buy, say, something online from Amazon, because they got an extra $20 a month, basically, you're going to get sales tax off of an Amazon purchase. So you can't, you're making it sound like once that money goes away, that the people are going to hoard it and keep it. No, they're going to spend it in the community, something else, to where you'll get the sales tax from it. So it's not all doom and gloom as far as, as- So it's not all doom and gloom as far as, as exactly what you're gonna lose, be it 2.4 million, or 5 million, or whatever. Also, it's a known fact, you can look this up, that the state of Kansas has the second highest sales tax in the country. Salina has the second highest sales tax in the state. So Salina citizens are whammy-bammy twice, basically, with the sales tax. And I, I think that you're looking at it the wrong way. In closing, this is one of those deals where, okay, if we're gonna lose 2.4 million, or 5 million, or whatever, maybe it's time to take some of the items of special interest groups or anybody else and putting them on the back burner because we haven't got the money to spend. We have to keep, keep everything else going in the city as far as utilities and everything else. So maybe that blue-collar budget, money that you guys get paycheck, needs to kind of roll over to maybe a blue-collar spending habit instead of a white-collar spending habit. Thank you.
Good point. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, that's one of my concerns with this bill is the whole tax cutting with the state. I was in favor of that graduated approach to let budgets kind of balance out. And now they, I'm afraid they're gonna run the state in a ditch. And we're in good shape financially, and, you know, I'm all for cutting taxes. But we all know expenses continue to rise for everything that the city provides services for.
I would like to add, and I'm, I'm just, a lot of my patients are older patients, just because of my specialty. I guarantee you, if they get 10% more money at the grocery store, it's going for 10% more food, not Amazon. Because they're already not buying enough food as it is because the check runs out. So that, that money is not gonna generate more tax for, for a lot of people. It just means that, oh, we can get everything we need this month.
The, in the staff report, I acknowledged that this is a policy decision and indicated that rather than consensus, I think it would be preferable if, if you wanted to make a motion and vote for clarity.
Can I ask a question? To whom is this recommendation going to be given? Because that might influence what recommendation is given.
In terms of how you word it.
Well, I mean, this is addressed to whom? The Senate as a whole? Our particular elected representative?
The intent was really just to get direction on behalf of staff and you as the elected officials about whether you wish to lobby against Senate Bill 248. And the intention isn't necessarily that the motion has to be worded in a way to convey the message. Just what is our position on Senate Bill 248?
Leave us alone.
Do you want a, a motion?
For clarity, that would be helpful. If you say that there's a consensus, I think I have a sense of it. But this, this may be a conversation that lingers. Something on the record wouldn't hurt.
I'll, I'll make a motion that authorize the city to lobby against Senate Bill 248 as it's written today. And the, the best interest of the city would be to gradually implement any tax changes.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion, a second, to oppose Senate Bill 248 as currently written. And to, how do I say, communicate that a stair-stepped.
Lobby for.
Lobby for would be our, in our best interest. Okay, okay, all, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Yep.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, hopefully that gives staff a little bit of direction. Okay, that will lead us into our additional item.
Item 7.1, Discussion of Housing RFP Process.
So I think Jacob's calling up the RFP as it was drafted and distributed. And within it, there's a timeline. I thought to give you an overview of, of that timeline and where we're at, and it might be helpful. We're kind of doing this on the fly, but if you sort the files by date, the most recent one will come to the top. It's just plunked out there randomly, no folder. Okay, if you would go to page six, please. There we go. Whoop, yep. So that is the timeline that was spelled out in the RFP itself. And you may, you may recall, on the 12th of December, staff came before you and gave you an outline of, of the timeline and the process that was gonna be proposed in the RFP. So we released the RFPs December 28th. The deadline for submitting questions was January 20th. We then responded to those questions by January 26th with a final submittal due date of February 3rd. We received 13 proposals, as I believe you're aware, on, by that deadline. We didn't receive any after the deadline. We received 13, all told. And so then we went through the process of reviewing those written proposals and identifying a shortlist and inviting seven of those proposers to respond. And I'll get to the, to the process here in a minute. And interviews were conducted, leading up to the end of last week. So that gets us to March 3rd. The intent has been that we, that a recommendation would come forth for your consideration to identify a preferred proposer to enter into negotiations with, and then contract negotiations for approximately 30 days, and then bring that back for the city commission's action. Jacob, if you could go to page nine, please. So the, yeah, the evaluation committee section, please. So the process that was spelled out in the RFP and, and discussed in mid-December was that there would be an evaluation committee that would evaluate the proposals. And there, that committee was expected to contain approximately five senior staff, including the city manager, as well as the city's financial advisor, Matt Webster with Stiefel Nicholas. And then it spelled out the evaluation process. And the, the RFP has review criteria, scoring, weighted scoring. And so that's the process that was used to review the written RFPs and, and create a shortlist for interviews. And then ultimately, intent would be, that would be the process be, that would be used to make a recommendation to you. And Jacob, if you could go back to page seven. And so while he's doing that, the, the intent, and there's language in the, the RFP, the intent was, you know, if we, if we had a respondent that had the identified number of, of units that we had indicated a preference for, then it may be recommending one respondent to, to the city commission. It did keep open the possibility of multiples in the event that it was necessary to combine proposals to, to get to the, the target number. And you may recall that we indicated a willingness to consider proposals down to 150 units. So if we had a floor of 150 and a goal of 500, the RFP kept open the possibility of, of having to mix and match proposals. So I wanted to call your attention to subsection D on that page, the city approval process. It does indicate that the selection of a proposal is subject to the approval of the city by, by its city commission at its sole discretion. So we've had conversation with Matt Webster, who, who helped draft the RFP and has conducted RFP processes or assisted in numerous other RFP processes for communities. Had a conversation with city legal counsel that if you, as the city commission, said you, you wanna deviate from the RFP process and you communicate to us and the respondents how you'd like to proceed, I think there is sufficient discretion that you could do that. So I know from conversations with, with you previously that, you know, there's been questions about bringing forward one versus bringing forward multiples for your consideration. And I think if you, if that's something that you wanted to do, you'd have the authority to do that within the discretion provided for in section D. I do think now is kind of the, the last opportunity to provide that direction. Otherwise, staff would be preparing a written staff report for you to be distributed later this week. And that would include a recommendation of, most likely, a single proposer. And that kind of would have a chilling effect if, if you wanted to consider more than one. It, it kind of predetermined at least staff's recommendation. So if you wanted to deviate from this process, now would be the time to do it.
And I think, sorry, this is where my concern was. Several folks have asked, well, how are you gonna compare them? And obviously, if we get one choice, we're not really selecting. We're, we're, we're passing, you know, yea or nay, not that we don't trust the process. But I think there's some expectation that we would know at least what types of proposals were out there. You know, be it two-story, three-story, brick, stone, pool, no pool, just, you know, vetting the financial capability of an applicant to pull it off is probably something you're infinitely better than your team doing than, than we would be. But it's just that, that issue of, you know, the selection. The selection implies that we have a choice.
I completely understand, and, you know, no offense taken by, by staff. What I would tell you is we have, we put a lot of thought, and we struggled with this process in, in general, as well as the open, public meeting aspect of it. And I would tell you that, you know, we, we've been very deliberate in considering what is subject to executive session, and not a whole lot, unless it's proprietary information. It's not. This was structured in a way that, you know, staff, as we're reviewing and preparing the recommendation, that isn't necessarily open to the public. And, and having it too open could have a chilling effect on, on respondents and their willingness to participate in the process. And so if, if you wanted to go forward with some broader consideration in light of open meetings and, and kind of the, the requirements that apply, I think that, that would be an open presentation by respondents to you that's open to the public.
I certainly want to go on record, I do not want to go through 13 of anything. None of this complexity. All right.
And so if you have a preferred approach, we're certainly open to it in, in trying to accommodate that. I do, you know, I think that the law varies between Missouri and Kansas. Matt Webster has experience in processes in Missouri. And I do think we're, Salina has a long history of doing it by the letter of the law. There may be examples out there where things like this are all done in closed session, but that's not been Salina's track record in light of our interpretation of open meetings requirements.
So it, when, at this stage, do companies have to reveal all of their financial backing?
Well, we have structured this in a way that that is, that could be considered proprietary information. And Matt Webster with Stiefel is, has expertise in that. So there is a way that they could submit directly to him. He could review it. He could provide, you know, his summary conclusions without fully disclosing their finances. That, that's more on the corporate, individual, financial level. The, the pro forma in terms of costs and rent rates and, and rates of return. We've not thought that to be proprietary, and, and that, that could be public.
I was just thinking what things an applicant would not want to disclose in a.
Well, the RFP did indicate that, at the conclusion of this, their proposals could be public. So they have every reason to know that, you know, generally, it can be public information. There was, there is some indication that detailed financial information. And when we do that financial due diligence review, that can be done at our financial advisor level and not be subject to being public record.
So if we were to ask several of the developers to, to come before us, you would ask them to make a presentation? Is that right?
It starts with what you, as a governing body, would like. But, you know, we, we narrowed the field from 13 to seven, and there seemed to be kind of a natural breakpoint there. Having conducted the interviews, I think if you said you wanted to hear from three, I'm not sure, the other four might not agree, but I think there's another, another kind of natural breakpoint there. And, you know, for what it's worth, the, the design, the configuration, the number of stories is important. But the things that are weighted in the scoring are experience, ability to start, complete the project, the methodology behind their financial model, the methodology behind their construction and their, their product. Obviously, if it's some odd proposed product we don't think would work in the community, that's a problem. But we're, our primary focus has been, can they do what they say they're gonna do? Have they done it before? Do they have a track record of success? Do they have, either have equity in place or access to equity? Do they have capital in place? Do they have lending in place? Have they done this before? So while I understand the initial desire to gravitate to the architectural renderings, we, that is part of the consideration, but first we gotta confirm they can actually do what they're saying they're gonna do. And so as we've conducted the interviews and narrowed the field, that's kind of how we would come up with our recommended slate, whatever number that might be for you.
You said there was a break between the top three and then the next four?
Yeah, I, you know, I, I think they, they all would love the opportunity to, to hear everyone else's presentation and hear the concerns and provide you with a response, but it would drag on forever. The three do, does seem like a, a breakpoint that we could, as staff, staff through for you, for you pretty easily. Now, having said that, that, assuming they're public presentations, one of the things we've talked about is everyone's gonna wanna go last. We can, it's public for the respondents, too. As much as we might say, you know, professional courtesy would be that you step out. With all the technology we have, no guarantees that they're not able to observe their competition's presentations.
So as it's laid out right now, you're gonna come to us next week with one proposal to yea or nay. Is that right?
Correct. And I've still gotta work through the staff report. I think we would provide you as much general information as we could, that we received 13 proposals. Here's kind of the nature, the, without talking about individual proposals. These are the kind of products, this is the, you know, rent rates. And it's gonna be broad ranges at that point. And then we would recommend one, but we would be hard-put to say, here's how they compare to two, three, four, and five. It would be, we've run, we, we've done our due diligence, and our recommendation is this one.
So essentially, the commission is gonna need to put our full faith and confidence in city staff that, I know you've worked hard on this last two months plus, and, but, yeah, we, we kind of don't know anything.
And for what it's worth, I'm not gonna take it as a vote of no confidence if you wanna see more than one.
Could, what you just described, would you be able to, I say you generically, be able to present three blinded proposals instead of the actual applicant presenting them?
I'm not gonna say that we couldn't, but we would be hard-pressed to, to do that in a way that the, who we're talking about doesn't know we're talking about them, nor they can't try to discern amongst themselves, you know, try to connect the dots. Boy, I think we'd be hard-pressed to redact enough information to really make that work.
Commissioner Ryan, comments?
And time to completion is one part of the RFP process. I mean, I assume they've all suggested different scenarios.
They have, and, and not to deviate too far, but I know another concern is kind of market absorption. So there's been a lot of conversation about when they would bring the first product to the market and how they would stage that. There seems to be a lot of consensus around how many. There seems to be a lot of consensus around how many units the mar, they think the market could absorb on a monthly basis. And so our folk, my, maybe I should just speak for myself rather than the rest of the staff, but I think there's two scenarios. You've got some respondents that say, we'd like to start with a lesser number, and then we'll talk. And then there's some respondents that said, we understand you're, you're wanting 500. We're, we're prepared to deliver you 500, but collectively, we think, we're going to bring, we're going to deliver them over time, and we should revisit how the market's absorbing them somewhere out in the future. I think there's a little, you know, there's, there's a notable difference there.
Commissioner Linkwitz? Now, just basically, my comments mirror what our city manager commented on, market absorption, and I just use the analogy of like, if you have a glass of water and a sponge, if you, if you pour that glass at once on the sponge, it's going to go everywhere. If you do it gradually, it's going to all stay in the sponge. And I'm hopeful that whatever we do does exactly that.
I apologize. If I could interject one other thing, one advantage of presentations to you is they will be on record as to what they've indicated they can do, and then staff will negotiate a development agreement to reduce that to writing. It, it kind of solidifies the negotiation a little bit more.
So you bring this next week, and we want more information, want to see, we can send it back. We don't need to.
You could. The difficulty there is we, in that scenario, we potentially say, we recommend X, Y, Z, and you come back and say, we want to see two more. Those other two are likely to say, well, staff's already recommended X, Y, Z. We, it feels like we've, you know, are one step behind.
But according to the document, it's the sole discretion of the city commission.
Well, true, but, and.
That means the developer goes along with that.
It just, if you're, if you want to consider more than one, my suggestion would be that we do that before one is recommended, you know, and we're trying to back up from that.
And, and if you, let's say, next week you bring us three, are we then going to be asked to make a decision on that, that day?
If you say you want three, then I think we, we're adding a step in this timeline, but we would bring you the three, give you some description of the process that we followed and how we narrowed it to three. You confirm that, then we're going to have to make arrangements with those three to schedule an opportunity to, and I think, and their, their presentation, that whole conversation may be an hour apiece, if not more, and we schedule that for another time. The other thing I should say is if today you say you want us to, to bring you three, then we're going to turn around and let the respondents know that there's been a change in, in direction, and, and here's how we're going to proceed.
I'll, I'll look to the commissioners for guidance for Mr. Skrag. Do we want to, to see more than one?
Might be a shorter meeting if he redacts their proposals.
Would these presentations be required to be public meetings?
Yes. That's our interpretation. I'd not put the city attorney on the spot, but, and I, I'll acknowledge that I think there's probably many examples in other communities where they might not treat them that way, but our interpretation is they are.
I, I guess I'm thinking if you just distributed information to us to look at it at our own discretion, but that's still.
Yeah, it's all leading to a collective decision.
Yeah, still open records. Everybody have to have that.
Yes, you're ultimately making a determination that I think is sufficiently directive as to what would follow. I think once we transition from the staff conducting the interviews that it has, with the benefit of that executive staff involvement, as well as the consultant, the Attorney General has recognized that in the development of the city manager's recommendation, that that is a staff function. As soon as we transition from a staff function to a city commission consideration, we transition from the ability to conduct that in a closed setting to needing to conduct that in an open setting. That's the distinction.
Is the, or, or could the information that would be presented publicly, if, let's say, three of them presented, be, if it was given to us on a Thursday, then it's open records for four days for those three presentations?
That's a good point. I, I think what, if, if you want to go down this route, I think, well, boy, it could go either way, but I think you, you might be better off saying they're going to come and make their presentation to you cold. I mean, much like when we conduct engineering firm interviews or designer interviews, they'll come in with a packet of information and walk you through their presentation. Otherwise, I think you're, there's going to be a lot of scrambling over the weekend as they review each other's and try to respond and.
Just trying to see how, how this could be made analogous to when we bid out a concrete job, and you get five people.
Well, in all honesty, the analogy there is staff does all that and brings you, brings you one.
And we just approve their recommendation.
But I fully understand this is at a different scale. I mean, when you're talking 25 million of state funds and 2 million of local city and county funds.
Right, because we approve their recommendation usually, but we do at least see who the other bidder was, where they're in town, out of town, what was the price spread, and reasons why, you know, if we don't go with the lowest bidder, a reason why.
Right.
Mayor, if I may, just to complete that story a little bit, there would be a point where once a determination had been made by the governing body in a public setting as to which applicants you wish to have staff proceed with, as those negotiations began of the development agreement, we would then transition back to a scenario where negotiations of the development agreement are subject to attorney-client privileged executive sessions. So we could have executive sessions, most likely will, that would follow that initial determination. So that's the pattern that we would be on.
Thank you. That's a good point.
To complete the process. So if, yeah.
So do you need a motion from us to, would you prefer that to?
Yes, for lack of a motion, we'll continue the RFP process as written, but if you wish to provide alternate direction by motion, that would be fine.
I feel comfortable with the staff bringing us their, their decision about what is the best proposal. We, we continue to have the right to refuse that if we see, we think there's something missing, missing, and we all come from different backgrounds, but I quite frankly think that our staff team is better positioned to make a selection than I personally feel able to do. So that's my place.
Right, and I certainly agree with the last part of that, as far as whittling the list down, and I'd probably be giving them an unfunded mandate if I asked them to bring three final proposals, but how to limit the time for the presentation and the amount of information that has to be made public. I don't, no, technically, that's an easy thing to, to pull off, and I could see why staff would not want to make a recommendation if three are going to present. I'm thinking, but someone else go ahead. I mean, I, I would like to, you know, I'm, I'm just curious to see, probably even two of them, because I don't know what would be missing unless I.
Hurt all three.
Hurt all three, yeah. And I'm sure whichever one our staff would present would have been vetted and vetted and vetted, it'd be a solid proposal. But it's just hard to philosophically make a selection when we have a choice of one.
Well, from my previous question, I don't think we're going to really make a selection, are we?
Well, I think.
We're going to approve or disapprove your selection, the staff.
Well, yeah, that may be a, a turn of phrase, but I think Commissioner Davis's point is, as currently structured, staff's going to bring you one and ask you to ratify the one, and then we'll enter into negotiations, or, and if you call that a selection, or, or I don't know what other adjective you want to use, but, or verb, maybe.
So I think what I'm hearing Commissioner Davis asks for is to see the top three.
Right.
Is that right?
Correct, and, you know, not that I necessarily have the professional prowess to sit there and analyze the subtle differences between the three, but I'd have some awareness of, of what the variety is, whereas the, otherwise, I'll, I'll have none.
Not to confuse it further, but I think you, as a governing body, would see, you know, substantive differences that you, they're not right or wrong, they, they would be preferential decisions at that point.
As long as that chance, we see three, and we have five different opinions, so that's the concern.
Well, I was sitting here thinking, then all we'd have to do is make a decision, which may be harder.
I know. We'd like to get this passed this year.
Right.
Yeah, we need to be moving. I'll give you a few seconds, Mr. Linkwitz.
Sure. Well, I think Commissioner Ryan had a good point, and just kind of for my own personal, like, how much time have we spent on this, has the staff spent on this in particular? I mean, this has been an ongoing thing, and a lot of people have done a lot of homework, a lot of legwork, a lot of pencil work, however you want to phrase it. And it's understandable, this is an inherently different item that we're voting on versus some of these other budget issues, but, you know, as long as everything's kind of drawn out, like, you know, these are the other proposals, and these are the numbers, if that's all provided, I'm comfortable with you guys presenting what you feel is the best foot forward.
Direct answer to your question, I think we're going to be hard pressed to give you that breadth of comparison without, you know, diving into them quite a bit. So again, no, no offense taken, if you feel, you know, to, by way of process, you, you would like that level of detail, then multiples probably is going to be an easier format for us to do that for you.
Is there, I mean, even if there was just like five, I think what I was thinking of is probably what Commissioner Linkwitz was just referring to. I mean, very basic information, you know, 400 units, 500 units, can build.
I think there's a lot more to it.
Well, there is, right.
Yeah, this isn't an RFP where we said, here's a piece of ground, tell me what you got. This is an RFP, here's ground I have, here's why, I mean, there's, there's a lot more to compare. You're not comparing apples to apples. At some point, if we look at three, I'm guessing we're comparing apples to oranges, and I mean, I'm just being simple. So, so you've got different, you know, some say, we'll do this, and then we'll, you know, then we'll look at the other group, or we'll do 500 in this stage. So I think to, to get to where, what you're saying is, it sounds to me like we need to bring three to us, let them narrow it down to three, and then I guess we're just going to have to weigh through what they have. If not, they can't really give us a spreadsheet, say, here's who we, here's who we want, here's why these others didn't get chosen.
I mean, we could, but using your example, if you understandably gravitate to, I prefer 500 units over 400, there's so much other context that goes into that, that.
Or even a, a, a summary of what were the final criteria that meet your final choice, your final, your top choice, using those criteria? And, and I'd be able to infer from the process you're using, what other.
I, I completely understand what, you know, your desire to have more information, but I think if that's what you want to do, you probably are better off narrowing the field and hearing their proposals.
Because, because we're going to be comparing rent rates, size of, size of, of units, you know, square footage, location, I mean, there's just a lot of things that go into that, so.
That's a very good point.
So I.
Now, if, if there were items that your top, you know, that you didn't like with your top choice, would you be able to identify those for us and say, this was a sticking point that.
Yeah, I think.
So we would have reason to know when we should be concerned.
Yeah, I think as staff, we could, you know, identify, provide you some comparison and contrast, if that's helpful.
While I want the additional information, I really don't know how the five of us would sit there 30 minutes later and give you a decision.
Well, yeah, in terms of timing, we, we'd have to rework this timeline a little bit to allow for the presentations themselves and then see what it is that you need, although if, if you extend that timeline, it just invites outside conversations and more information, and, and it might splinter the process.
Are we locked in with the funding the state has provided us? If we slow the timetable?
December of 2026 is the ultimate timeline, so we're, yeah, we would be burning a little bit of daylight, but I think you want to get it right on the front end, for sure.
Which sounds like a lot of time until you start.
Yeah, when you put the timeline.
Depending on what we have to do for infrastructure and buildings, so. So we will get this proposal on Thursday evening next week, right? This week?
You, you would get a staff report on Thursday. In, in the current format, you would get a staff report on Thursday with a recommended developer to enter into negotiations with.
So I'm going to say, we wait till we get that and take a look at it, and if three of us don't like it, we can kick the can down the road a little further.
Well, it's got to be a group consciousness, and I'm, I'm all in favor of group consciousness. If, if that's the group, I'm, I'm with you.
I think it's worth mentioning that this is a decision that's going to have a long-term effect on the city, and maybe we would be remiss not to take a little more time. You know, in hindsight, I mean, if we look back 10 years from now and go, jeez, we should have maybe taken, and I, I'm not wanting to drag my feet or, or want to prolong anything, but, you know, looking back, I want to be able to say that we made the best decision possible with all the information we have, and I'm.
Is it reasonable to think that three applicants could be here next? I don't know if, if our agenda next Monday would even handle, if it really would take three hours to do three of them.
Well, and I don't know that it has to be on a Monday. We could schedule, you know, an alternate day and time. I'd, we, we, the staff can sort that through. I, I think.
And they may not all be available next Monday.
Yeah, I think we're going to need to give them an opportunity to, to kind of adapt to the alternate approach and give them a little time to respond, but I think we can expedite it, but.
Could we put that into a study session and then?
Sure.
Discuss it? A good idea.
Yep, yep. I don't, I don't know that we could get everybody to pivot by next Monday, but we could certainly move it quickly. But if, if you feel like, I'm repeating myself a little bit, but I completely understand the concern in general, as well as the process. If you feel like there, you have any misgivings now, or it's likely you'd have misgivings somewhere out in the future based on people contacting you, whatever, I'd rather we are deliberate on the front end and get it right, rather than trying to react on the back end.
I'm going to look to city, or to council. Is the mayor able to make motions?
Yes, sir, you are.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion just so we can see where we head, so. I make a motion that we direct staff to bring three proposals to city commission for consideration of, what do I want to say? Based on the RFPs that were sent out.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for staff to bring us three proposals with, dealing with the RFP process that has been conducted. All those in favor?
Can I ask one point of clarification? So if I, if I understand what you just indicated, well, and that's why I need to bring you three to ratify next Monday, just get the three scheduled to come before you?
Right, correct.
Okay.
Yes. Okay, have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, that passes four to one. We'll see where that leads us. Thank you, and thanks, staff, for. staff, for.
Just to clarify, and that bring it to us would not necessarily have to be during a regularly scheduled Monday meeting.
Yeah.
We will try to move it as quickly as possible, and recognizing that if need be, it may be a special meeting.
Yep. Okay. Okay, that brings us to other business. Any of the commissioners have anything else to bring forward?
We, oh, pardon me. I was gonna mention, Mayor, under other business, that we had a letter at our place here, and the staff was prepared to comment about that on the retirement issue. Is there homework there to be done?
Sure. Actually, yeah. Actually, I reached out to Chief Weiss. He was kind of aware of, of the topic in advance of, of the letter. And there's two, there's the author of the letter, and then they named another officer. And I guess maybe I should back up. Kansas' police and fire pension system allows for an early retirement. I don't know the day, the age and years of service off the top of my head, but it recognizes the nature of police and fire work as such that they are eligible for retirement earlier than participants in, in the KPR system on, you know, the typical government side. So we, it's not uncommon to have police officers or firefighters retire out of the KPNF system, but continue to work somewhere. And so I don't know that the police department's policy's been consistent in terms of recognizing those retirements. I think that the general expectation has been, if you're of retirement age and truly retiring and discontinuing work, then they view that as a retirement for ceremonies and plaques and things like that. But having said that, I don't think the department's been consistent in that application over time. And so the letter points out, there's an inconsistency there, and they had examples of, of other employees that were treated as if they were retiring and felt like we should be consistent. So Chief Weiss was already aware of that issue, was tracking that down and of a like mind with me, that we need, we need a policy, we need some predictability, some formality to that. And then I spoke with him this morning after seeing the letter, and he's reached out to the author, as well as the other officer, and offered to speak with them and, and talk that through. So my understanding, as of 4:30, is that he's made contact, but with one of them, and will be speaking with them tomorrow. So basically acknowledging the concern and trying to identify a solution. Thank you.
I just wanted to bring to people's attention, there's an election tomorrow in Oklahoma, special question 820 on completely legalizing marijuana. And I just want people to think about the, if this passes, the impact it's gonna have on Kansas, being surrounded by Colorado, Missouri, and then Oklahoma. I just do not see anything good coming from it. And from a law enforcement perspective, I don't know how they're dealing with all this, but.
Okay. If there's no other business, that, this brings us to Citizens Forum. This is an opportunity for someone to, to come forward and talk about something that was not on the agenda. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. So, anyone available?
Mayor Hoppe, Commissioner, I'm Steve Murison, 502 South State Drive. And I'm here today because I've sent a, talked to Holly McKenna's last week about first steps, and she should have given you a thing about being designated as a POW MIA city, and for Salina to become one. It's kind of leaned out the groundwork for what the requirements are, and kind of a sample letter. I also sent you an email today with some of that same information, with also one that might be example for Salina. So I'd like to see about coming before you at some point to actually have the commission consider that for approval. And as soon as possible, actually, they, the next meeting they have is March 14th. Don't know if that's possible to get it done by then, but at some point.
Yeah, I, I saw your email. I apologize. I didn't have a chance today to, to read it, so I guess I'll have to ask the staff of how, I don't know if you've seen the email.
I have.
I'm not sure how, how we would, how we move forward as a city if we wish to address this.
Yeah, as, as I review it, there's a handful of things. Some, some, well, none of it's problematic, I guess, but they, they are looking for obtaining the approval of the city government, in their words, to present a request. So I think that would take action on the governing body's part to request designation as a POW MIA city. Then they talk about a time and place for a formal presentation, but they also mentioned displaying the POW MIA flag in front of the city hall, which we currently do. They talk about publicly acknowledging the POW MIA Recognition Day, which is the third Friday in September. We can do that by resolution, as you well know. They talk about publicly acknowledging National POW Recognition Day, which is slightly different than, than the other, and it is on April 9th. Again, we could do that by resolution. They suggest placing a remembrance plaque at a city location, listing the former POWs and MIA's from the area. I can't speak for the group that's working on the Veterans Memorial, but that seems like there's probably some good synergy there. I think the hardest part's gonna be compiling that list and then, you know, preparation of the plaque. I think that might be an opportunity to coordinate with.
I believe Jason McIntyre has, has conducted that, like there are, I believe, 10 POWs and one MIA currently. I think they've, that's kind of been done.
So I don't know if there's a way to incorporate that into the, the Veterans Memorial planning that's underway. And that's, that's pretty much it. If you, as a governing body, would like to pursue this, we can prepare that initial request for your authorization to submit, and I think it'll flow from there.
Is there an obligation there to fundraise?
There's a mention of, of it, and, but it also talks about.
Or donate.
It being tax deductible, and, wait, wait, that wouldn't apply to us, but I don't think there's an obligation on our part to raise funds.
It's just kind of an assistance. It really would be, you know, we would conduct something to be aware of the POW MIA and run it, and just kind of like maybe have the support of the city in some, in some aspect.
Okay. Look to commissioners, there's a consensus, ask city staff to move forward on this?
Yep. I would move that we move forward to.
Okay. It's not really an item, so we'll just, we'll ask staff to move forward on that. So appreciate you waiting through the meeting to, to get to this, so.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Mary Mye from Salina. I wanted to give you an update from our water drive we had last week to send to Palestine, Ohio. We collected $3,804 in donations, and we used every bit of it to buy water. Sam's and Dylan's on cloud ordered in extra water every evening, so we'd have plenty of water the next day, but we did run them out on Saturday. We, they gave us the last they could do. And we received 13 and a half pallets from different businesses in town. And we sent 18 and a half pallets this morning, the truck left, this morning, according to Jamie Bradley. He was either gonna leave last night or this morning. And we've got, as of Saturday at 5:00, we had 15 more pallets to send. So Doug Bradley's trucking was going to take a second truck, and Jamie said he didn't know for sure when they were gonna do it, just a little later, so that we, they didn't get hit with two trucks at one time. And so we want to especially thank Doug Bradley Trucking and Long MacArthur, and students from Salina Area VOTEC Diesel Department, and the students from Sacred Heart High that helped us take the water from people when they came and delivered it to the warehouse. So we had a successful event, and we have a great community that participated.
And I understand the 18 and a half pallets was a maximum due to weight.
Maximum weight, yes.
Due to weight. Yep, that's what I understood, so, good.
Yeah, when I, we, we had over the wait on Thursday evening, when we stopped at 5:00, and we still had pallets of water. So we went out Saturday morning. We didn't buy any more water, because, you know, we didn't want to ask Bradley to take another truck at their expense. And so when we went out there Saturday morning, I asked him what we should do, and he said, go get more water. We're gonna load a second truck. So we were very grateful for them.
Good for you, and thank you for sharing that with us.
Are you still taking donations? Okay.
Well, if somebody wants to donate, so they can take it out to the warehouse, but.
Okay. Anybody else?
Nora Manosalina. We need to look long term. This water issue is very serious. It's in the news. The lack of water and electrical energy, it's in the news again. Another substation has been hit. We're gonna lose our electricity. We're gonna lose our water. I have talked to a man in North Platte, Nebraska today. Even the water sources in Nebraska are low. Our wells in western Kansas are down. They're shutting them down. Those wells, the water out there in western Kansas affects the Celine River, the Smoky Hill River. You're gonna run out of water here. You better be looking down the road for about 10 years, because you ain't gonna be able to do anything without water. Number two, these chemical issues with these railroads having wrecks. We've got a major railroad comes right through this city, Union Pacific. Have you ever seen a military transport train go through here? They don't slow down. All them cars have got chemicals in them. So I think you need to be looking long term. It's also in the news. If we pass a regulation banning people from sleeping on public property, where are we gonna put them? Are any of you elected officials willing to take these people into your house? It'd be your responsibility as the leadership to show leadership abilities. But we better start looking long term. It's gonna bite us.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else? Okay, if not with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn in a second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. See you next week. Thank you.